In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NORCAM and may be recorded by other local media. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, through the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, just as God.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us for this hour's cycle meeting. We have one topic on the agenda this evening, and we're going to do that in open session, and then we're going to enter into executive session shortly following our first discussion. The town administrator just needs a minute to get to his seat. But the topic tonight is to discuss the potential real estate opportunity in 217 Main Street, and I'll turn it over to the town administrator and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is my voice coming through all right on the microphone? Everyone in the room, too? Good. So, as has been discussed in previous meetings, we've been conducting an evaluation relative to the suitability of a particular property here in town, that being the property at 217 Main Street, to serve municipal purpose or purposes. And we've been doing so after becoming aware that the property was for sale, and I think it's fair to say that we've identified that the building could most certainly address a series of municipal needs for the town, as I've mentioned before, be they public safety or public works, either direct or related services in those departments, as well as the potential for some office space at the front of the building. So, there is an opportunity in this building for, in this property, for us to achieve some needs, and to, I should say, to address some needs that we've been talking about, maybe not necessarily on the timeline that we were expecting, a little more quickly than that. But I think that we're fortunate that we do have an opportunity. And so, really, I think that the feeling was, by having the first part of the conversation, was to recognize and establish that the board feels that that's the direction that we should pursue. One of the things that I've mentioned, or that we have discussed, I should say, internally is the fact that this is a single property that we're looking at, and we've done some review to try to determine what we think is the case, which is, is this a unique property? And when I say "we think," it's because most of us have a pretty good working knowledge of the community, including the board members, and I think that our instinct was that this was, in fact, a unique property. But, in fact, we've done some review, and I've provided the board this evening a report of the assessor, which explains her opinion that, in fact, this is a unique property after doing the evaluation. And I won't go too far into the details, but she conducted an analysis of the Main Street corridor, which is a geographic location we've been looking at here, identified that there were two properties that were, that may have been similar, but upon further review of those properties, they don't provide the combination of location, size, and building construction that we believe would be needed to address the needs I identified earlier. So, before the board this evening, for the public portion is a potential vote to make a determination relative to the uniqueness of this property, and if the board were to make such a determination, my recommendation would be to continue to a deliberation relative to, if it so desires, making a potential offer of the property.
Would you like to hear from Mrs. Carboni?
We can maybe ask Ms. Carboni to give a brief summary of her work. I think I've mostly summarized it, but...
Debbie, you can sit at the table if you'd like to. It's fine.
Good evening. Debbie Carboni. Mike did pretty much touch base on all of what I looked at. We kept it with, I kept it within the HB-zoned area, because that's where the subject property is located. With that being said, to find another piece of property that is exactly the same is impossible. So, I did find some with similar characteristics, but that's all we found, making 217 a very unique piece of property. It has access to Main Street and also a potential onto a second egress and exit, which makes it even that much more unique than any other property in the town, in HB-zoned. So, with that being said, that's, those were my findings for 217 Main Street, and the rest of the dialogue in the document.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Carboni? Yeah, I will say, I mean, I may not know the town as well as others, but I definitely believe that the property is extremely unique, especially for what we believe our uses can be, what our immediate uses can take place if we acquire this building. And I think that's what, to me, determines why it's so unique, is really the uses. So, and I do hope we get to the opportunity tonight to have the motion and vote on it, but I don't know how any of the other board members feel. Anybody feel that it isn't unique? Yes?
Just may, Ms. Carboni, just for the folks at home, you mentioned it's HB-zoned. If you could maybe explain what that is?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's highway business zone, so throughout the town, you always have to have certain zoned areas. Zoned areas dictate a lot of your building, if you will, what can be constructed within that zoned area. So, in HB, you have a parameter that, you know, you have to have 165-foot frontage, you have to have, you know, certain setbacks, it has to be a certain size. With that being said, that's why I stuck just to the HB zone, so that it would qualify. And I do agree, Chairman Prisco, that for the needs of the town, this property and what it offers makes it unique in itself, in my opinion.
Mrs. Minnabelli, please.
We would be able to work with what's already existing there for office space, as well as any other kind of maybe public safety use that might be being considered. There's, it's not tearing it down, it's already built, at least the bones of it are already built, too, so...
Correct. And that was one, when researching the properties to find like-kind properties to compare to this, if we came across another 2.8-acre parcel, you may have to tear that building down. So, you're not only in it for destruction, but you're also in it for construction.
That also includes the interior. I mean, maybe we found a building that somewhat similar, but already has an interior. This is essentially a shell that has the right height, ceiling heights, and structure type that we were looking for, for many options for the town, and that's, again, I think, another reason why. I mean, we don't have to now pay for the cost to tear it apart. It's essentially a shell now, once we acquire it, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One thing I do feel important to add, just more for the public who may be watching, is I think that all of us involved in evaluating this property and bringing this information to the board tonight recognize that the property will need some sort of alterations or outfitting within it. It is certainly, I believe we all feel strongly, a solid shell of a building at minimum, and probably more than that, particularly in fact, or in the office space, but, you know, in interest to full transparency, we all also feel that there will need to be some improvements made to the building.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to point out to the public, we've all seen the inside of it, and the public has it, and this was really an open slate of the inside of it. And what you said, Mr. Chairman, really doesn't even do it justice. It's literally, I don't know how high the ceilings are in there, maybe 20, 30-foot high?
They're 20.
20, okay.
According to my records.
And it's wide open. You can cut it up, any sort of stuff for, you could put town storage in there, you could put, I mean, you put anything you want in there. It's really, gives you a lot of options. It's not like it's cut up right now where you got a shoehorned things in there. You can divide this thing up any way you want. I think that's important, too, that it's not already retrofitted.
And I think the nice thing about the building as well is, we don't have to do it all at once. It's certainly a building we could phase in different uses at a time, rather than have to have a huge upflow of money. Once we acquire the building, we can take our time and do a few things at a time, as we can afford them. So, there's no other discussion. Mr. O'Leary?
I separate this into two different issues. One, you know, the uniqueness of the property itself, and, you know, if the board were to take a position, which we haven't yet, as far as, you know, making an offer and purchasing, to try and purchase the property, you know, does this fall into the unique category? To me, that's yes. Back to the other question in relation to, you know, should we be doing this in the timing right? Do we have a game plan? Is that how we're going to approach it? That's a whole other set of issues that we haven't determined as of yet, but knowing that time is of the essence, because obviously the property owner has put it up for sale and is looking for a ready buyer sooner rather than later, then the board has to make a determination, you know, rather quickly. So, we've got a couple of big decisions to make.
Oh, yeah.
One is, you know, are we going to put an offer in, and do we have a game plan, and what is it going to be, and how are we going to pay for it? And two is, if we do have an interest, then we have to go this, this route here in order to do it on a timely basis, and does it fall into this proper category as being unique? And, you know, so, for me, it does fall into the category as far as being unique, you know, as far as what are we going to do? I'm still, the jury's still out, but we'll discuss that later, I guess.
Okay.
Agreed.
So, we'll take a motion, and if we don't have any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to determine that due to its location on Main Street, building construction type, building size and layout, combined garage, office, and other space and availability, that 217 Main Street satisfies the Town of North Reading's unique requirements for the acquisition of real estate, and that advertising for proposals from the owners of other properties will not benefit the town.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schultz. Any more discussion?
So, just to make sure everyone's clear, listening at home, this isn't a motion to acquire the building, it's a, just a motion to, to make sure we identify it as a unique property. That's all we're doing here. It allows us to go into the next phase, which is to make the discussion about what we could do for uses in this building, and maybe discuss the possibility of making an offer. Correct, Mr. Gilberto?
I think that the issue of submitting the offer is the key component of any further discussion from the, from that standpoint. If we were going to continue to have discussion about the use of the property, some of that may need to take place, obviously, in open session.
That's fine, but I just want to make sure people at home understand very clear on what this motion means.
Sure.
It's not to acquire the building.
That's correct.
Just want to make that clear.
This is simply a declaration that it is a unique property, meeting our unique requirements.
Okay. So, I have a motion second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Posed? Unanimous. Thank you. I think the next step is, we can go into executive session, then, to have the next discussion, or is there something else in open session?
If the, if we're moving to considering an offer to be made, then my recommendation would be to go into executive session for that, because we will be discussing the value of the property.
Mr. O'Leary?
Just, were we planning on further informing the public as to what we see the potential uses for this property? I, you know, we may have had some, as we did the walkthroughs and stuff, but I don't know that in public, we've actually outlined what we see the potential uses of the, of the building to be, whether it be in the near term or the long term.
I thought we did, but maybe...
I'm happy to elaborate.
Yeah, I think we can have that discussion, absolutely.
With regard to the considerations that are being looked at. So, I've talked about public works and public safety. To put it in more detail, for those who have been following any budget discussions over the past few years, we've talked a lot about the need for a presence in, for the fire department on the west side of town, along the Main Street corridor. So, that would be an obvious use that would fit this property, given its construction, its garage access, and its location, so certainly for potential fire department use. We've had some conversation about whether or not vehicle maintenance, and I use that in the broad term for all departments, could be cited in this property. I think we believe that there's sufficient space to do that as well, and again, I mean for all departments, public safety, public works, or otherwise. And then, also using the front office space at the property, that there is strong potential for some of the administrative functions of the fire department, the other public safety departments, including health and building, and the administrative and other non-operational components of the public works department. So, certainly, we're not here with any sorts of decisions being made, but in terms of the visioning-type discussions, I think that that's what, you know, what we think may be some possibilities for this site, to give a little more detail to it.
Any, Mr. O'Leary, any more?
Just in relation to the administration's recommendation for financing, purchase and renovations.
So, from our standpoint, the finance director and I have had some limited conversation with regard to our options. To run through what those options would be, they could be a cash outlay, which obviously would be a significant undertaking, whether it be from our available reserves, certified free cash, or our proceeds from the sale of town-owned land, which I think we're all familiar with, namely, the Berry property, which was sold last December, resulting in between $19 and $20 million coming into the town. So, that's one alternative, and I think it's probably the alternative that we would be most closely looking at for a recommendation. The other alternatives, obviously, are the more traditional methods of borrowing, and borrowing over a term, 20 or 30 years, for example. And, of course, when you start talking about that, the borrowing could be within our existing tax levy or outside of the tax levy. I think, as we sit here right now, the conversations and the discussion are focused more on the use of proceeds from the sale of town-owned land to fund this, and I will note, there's been a lot of conversation about the eligible uses for that, and the use of that funding is not, we're not authorized or able to use it for operating costs, we're able to use it for debt service, or for capital acquisition, which this would, in either scenario, fall into. So, I think that's the thinking in terms of how this would be financed. Again, it would obviously be a decision that would be finalized by the board, and obviously approved through town meeting, but that would be what I expect to be the recommendation.
Mr. Masari?
It's clear to me that the facility itself could be used by the town for a number of different reasons, and it, one of the things, if we go forward with this, I think we have to look at it as we're acquiring a structure, and then we're going to spend additional funds in that structure, depending on what we decide to put in it, you know, whether it is to a west-side fire station, or an extension to the DBW, or a maintenance area, or office area, extended office area, or for something else we haven't even thought about.
Right.
So, I think we need to make it clear that our, any action that we take associated with acquiring the facility is a timing issue, that we haven't all thought out in detail, what we would finally use that building for, or how many uses that building would have, and what the cost of setting it up would be.
I agree. That's what I was saying earlier. I believe the building has uniqueness to it, where we could acquire it and even just maybe focus on the fireside first, and then move our way through the building as we know where our needs need to be. We still are in the process of doing that built-in study, and, you know, again, anything, if we acquire this building, it's just going to take time. So, I think it'll all evolve, but I certainly think we don't have to have 100% of the solution to what we're going to put in that building at the time, if we acquire it. I just don't think, I mean, I think there's a little common sense to it, in, you know, acquiring it, because we believe there are some immediate needs, but not 100% of the building will be, I think, laid out and exactly identified what we use it for. That'll come over time, but I certainly think it's a nice position to be in. And the other question I had, maybe this for the finance director, you know, we, let's just say, we use some of the JT Berry funds to acquire the building, but we could also leverage the investment of the JT Berry funds to pay any debt for any kind of build-outs we may do in the interior of the building. Is that something that we could consider? I know we use it as part of our revenue plan today, but as revenues are increasing in other areas in town, especially for the new growth, that, would this be a potential option?
Other further, the finance director?
The answer to your question is yes, but it wouldn't be directly through the investment earnings from the money, from the sale of town-owned land. What we would have to do is let that money flow into free cash and appropriate free cash. So, it would not be part of our revenue plan, it would be revenue above and beyond our estimated receipts, and therefore, then, we would have to appropriate free cash.
Okay.
As that is a general fund revenue source.
Thank you. Mr. Masari?
Liz, is there a way of taking earnings from that, from the Berry money that we have, and putting it into, rather than let it flow into free cash, putting it into some account? Could we do that?
I can look into that. There is a potential that we may be able to do that. We may need to appropriate the funds, similar to what we did at June town meeting, to offset the FY19 operating budget. We appropriated them to the capital improvement stabilization fund, and then that fund transfers out. Stabilization funds retain their own interest, so there may be a mechanism that we can segregate the interest just from that investment.
I bring it up because we have a history of utilizing our free cash as part of our operating budget, and to pay for other things is part of our annual budget process, and therefore, earnings from that, if they're flowing in a free cash, are just going to disappear. I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything, I'm just saying that, you know, we have a tendency to say, okay, free cash goes here, and this is what we're going to do with it. Right? And it seemed to me, we want to utilize the Berry as an investment and generate capital to which we will, we ought to be putting it somewhere other than free cash.
Sure. You know, and I'll just note that we don't, we don't per se use free cash or appropriate free cash towards the operating budget. Typically, we appropriate free cash and put it into the stabilization fund, or the debt capital stabilization fund, or we buy, you know, according to the capital plan, it calls for a certain amount of free cash, so those type of things, but not for the annual operating budget. But I do understand what you're saying, it's better to have it set aside, but similar to what we did for the PFA, which was the employee and employer health insurance savings, we knew that those funds were going to turn into free cash, and we, as soon as free cash was certified, those funds were set aside, you know, and then we knew what we had for free cash going forward. So, you know, if we had a plan in place, and, you know, we knew what we needed to set aside to pay for debt service, I think that is doable as well. So, you know, it's something that can be discussed.
Mr. O'Leary?
I think it's extremely important with the money that the proceeds from the sale of JT Berry remain segregated and not easily obtained through the normal processes of things, because, again, it's, it's a windfall, it's a one-shot deal, and I think we have to be very cautious as to how it gets expended, and how the interest earned on it is going to be expended, and what it's going to be invested in. Suggestions such as this one are things that we should be, should be looking at doing with it. So, I'm all in favor of earmarking the, the interest earned on these, on these funds for specific capital projects or economic development purposes, rather than just having it convert to free cash. So, to me, this is one of the big questions as to how we're going to finance, if we decide, if the board decides to move forward with this type of an acquisition. I also think that we need to have some discussion in relation to just paying cash out for it. To me, if you pay the cash out, your principal amount is gone and diminished, and it's not going to be there. I know, I know that there's a cost associated with borrowing, but by the same token, if we have an opportunity to retain some of the principal for a generation to come, you know, I think we need to take a look at that.
Yeah.
And, you know, so that I'm not too enamored by the idea of just, you know, paying cash money for this acquisition if it comes to fruition, and I think we need to look at the funding source. Again, we have a revenue stream in relation to interest on, on the funds that are deposited, and if we earmark those and can retain more of the principal for 10, 20, 30 years from now, I think we'll be doing a greater service to the community, rather than just obtaining the asset, paying for it, and not have any debt on it, you know. But, again, that's discussion for another day in the not-too-distant future. Additionally, in relation to the specific proposal here, as far as, you know, whether we're going to make an offer or not, you know, and again, this is through no fault of our own, it's just an opportunity that's presenting itself. You know, my concern is, is that we're forced into a position because of the opportunity, you know, to potentially be making a decision that hasn't fitted into any long-range plan. I mean, we've already just formed a committee to look at our facility's needs, you know, how would this fit in? We don't know. I mean, we haven't done it yet. We have MAPPC plans, and we have, the CPC is putting together their master plan, which calls for, you know, certain parts of their proposal to maybe make a municipal center, you know, how does this fit in, or do we want it to fit in? So, one of the challenges that we have, and that I've been wrestling with over the last few weeks, since this opportunity's come up, is, you know, do we let the opportunity pass, pass us by, you know, or do we jump at it and try and fit it into a plan that hasn't been established yet? So, those are some of the things that we're going to be talking about as a board, you know, in the next few hours, I guess, and the next few days and weeks, depending upon, you know, what action the board takes, and if the board decides to make an offer, you know, and its negotiations take place, you know, these are the things that we have to decide in, in short order, and then we'll have to have a town meeting. And if the board decides to do something, just in relation to town meeting, what are you talking about, within two months?
Depending upon the nature of the board's decisions regarding an offer, but yeah, I mean, in the next few months.
Well, I would think, I don't know what we need for time to lead to, but probably, you know, January, February, right?
Two months, right?
Again, that depends upon if we make the offer, if the owner's willing to wait that long also, wait that long for a town meeting, the decision that they hope would be favorable, because without favorable town meeting action, it doesn't come to fruition either. So, but anyway, I just, just want the public to know that, you know, I'm wrestling with it from a couple of fronts. One is how are we going to finance it? Two, does it fit into any plan that we really haven't completed a study on yet? And, you know, while it is a terrific opportunity, and it is a unique, a unique parcel, you know, we have, we have some quick decisions to make, and it's going to cost us a lot of money if we decide to move forward. So, that being said, I look forward to the discussion with, with my colleagues here, and bring it to some sort of a conclusion.
Ms. Rourke, then, Mr. Masari?
I just wanted to clarify that the, the proceeds from the Berry property sit in a receipts-reserved fund, which requires an appropriation at town meeting in order to expend any of those funds. The only piece of the $19 million and change that was invested is $5 million. $5 million sits in a 24-month CD. The rest of the funds are in a money market account, earning probably $2.25, $2.5 at this point in time. That was the decision to make, was to invest $5 million of the $19 million. That was the decision to make, was to invest 5 million of the 19 and change. Those interest earnings are general fund interest earnings, so we cannot, you know, use the 19 million for anything that we want to. It has, you know, restrictions. It can only be used for capital projects or to pay for debt service that has a life of five years or longer. So, you know, we still are required to go to town meeting for an appropriation, and those funds are segregated, they're not part of the general fund. The only piece of those, of what we are receiving from those funds is interest income that is general fund income at this point in time. Unless, and I will do some research and ask our outside auditor as well, if we can put interest earnings to that type of fund, or if we need to look into moving the funds into a standalone fund, still requiring appropriation, but that can earn its own interest earnings, similar to a stabilization fund, which have to be in an interest-bearing account and earn their own interest income that doesn't become general fund income. So those are just the two differences, and only the piece that is going towards the operating budget as part of our revenue plan and estimated receipts is the interest income on the 5 million of the CD, as well as whatever the, you know, 14 million and change is earning, that is part of general fund income.
Thank you. Mr. Messer.
I guess my question is, why is only 5 million invested?
I will, I will look to Chairman Prisco.
When we were going through the budget last year, there was that discussion, we went through that discussion, and the board felt more comfortable not investing in the entire thing. We said, let's try 5 million, and then we'll see, we'll proceed down the road, we'll see how it goes. I think people were afraid to take that risk, to invest that much money right up front.
Well, when we talk about investing, I'm a, what are we investing in?
Just a certificate of deposit earning.
That's it.
2.75% for 24 months. We, and we do not have to wait until the 24 months are up. We receive the interest income monthly for that CD.
Right.
The remaining 14 sit in a money market account, and I believe the last time I checked, it was 2 and 1/2%. I'm not sure if it's 2 and 1/4, you know, it does fluctuate somewhat, but it's in, it's in the 2 range for the 14 million. And, you know, in the coming weeks, we are developing investment policy for the board to approve, so we can have further discussion.
Sure.
You know, in regards to not just these funds, but other funds that we have.
This is the season where we discuss everything, all our finances, and certainly if you wanna explore doing something different than what's been structured by the...
No, I just needed to be reminded of what we did and why we did it.
Sure. Absolutely. Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, I just think for the public out there, it's important that we state a couple of things, that obviously if we do decide to make an offer on this property, it's gonna be dependent upon we can find a price that makes sense for the town of North Reading, first and foremost. Secondarily, I think it's a bigger issue out there, things like a fire station, sewage and commercial areas, a senior center, senior housing. These are things as a town we've neglected to do for years. We need to invest in infrastructure. We haven't spent in infrastructure for years in this town, and now we're in a situation where we have to spend on all these different projects because we didn't do them in the past. Every year you wait to do any of these projects, the more it's gonna cost you. Construction costs, I have never really seen them go down, they generally go up. I agree with my colleague, Mr. O'Leary, I'm not a fan of spending the Pulte money on, or JT Berry money on one-off projects. I think there should be a blend of financing and using the investment income. But I think as a town, we gotta start attacking some of these different things. I think there's an opportunity for, you know, I know we're looking at something in IRP, but if that doesn't work out, maybe have a senior center attached to this property. It's another use that I think could be used, especially since there's access to a side road that you wouldn't have people coming in off 28. I just think we have to look at these big picture items a little more, and if we can't keep kicking the can down the road with these major infrastructure items that we need to have, they're just gonna cost us more money. But at the same token, I do agree again with Mr. O'Leary, we shouldn't be spending the JT Berry money on one-off projects. It needs to be a blend between using some cash, but financing and using the investment income, and as Mr. O'Leary, I think correctly puts, saving that principal for generations to come, I think that's very important.
Yeah, but we gotta keep buying. We're very limited on what we can do with that principal.
Yeah.
So...
It's a blend.
Yeah. We have work to do, there's no doubt about it, and that's why we'll go into executive session, we'll, we'll have that next phase of discussion, and we'll see where we go from there. So if there isn't any other questions, I'd take a motion, but I would ask the board, oh, Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah, I have, I guess a couple more comments. What, I take a little bit of exception as to what was just stated by my colleague here, that, you know, things have been neglected over the years past. It hasn't been a question of neglect. I mean, a lot of the, the issues that have been, that are on the table today, that are before us, the, the needs that we have, have been the same needs that we've had for 25 or 30 years. It's a question of affordability and how we're gonna tackle it. It isn't something that we could realistically do. And every year, you know, these boards, previous boards, and this current board has set, established a set of priorities in relation to the revenue stream. And, you know, as much as we would like to do certain things and invest in certain things, we didn't have the revenue to do so. So it's not as though any of these ideas have been lost in the past, because they haven't, they're still been, I mean, I've been sitting here a long time, and there haven't been a lot of new ideas, there've been some opportunities, but there haven't been a lot of new ideas and new needs identified or desires put forth that we'd like to see and like to have done and be able to provide in the way of services to our community. It's just a question of affordability. But when we talk about priorities, you know, and what we're talking about now is an opportunity that's being presented to us, and does this opportunity fit into any of the priorities? Or how high are those, does this opportunity, where does it fit in the priorities that we've had? You know, and if you look at our recently-approved strategic plan, you know, we're talking about analyzing our facilities, you know, doing an analysis of all of our facilities' needs. But a West Side Station wasn't clearly identified as a priority because it comes down to affordability, you know, centralization of mechanics, you know, for DPW, public safety and school, you know, all under one roof. We've talked about that over the years, it's just a question of we didn't have necessarily all the space out at the DBW garage to do so. So from a prioritization standpoint, you know, where does this fall, and does it leapfrog some of the other priorities that have already been identified by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee and from a long-range standpoint, and from our immediate, immediate needs? So this is what we have to wrestle with. So, and we'll do that over the next few minutes or hours, I suppose, and then days. So, but I do take some exception to the fact that we haven't neglected to do anything. You know, we have talked about it, we have looked at the different needs and desires of the community, and I can't think of anything that we haven't done that we were able to afford to do and neglected to do.
Sewage years ago? Well before anyone else on this board?
There were opportunities back in the 70s to tie into the South Essex Sewage District, that was the moderators at the time, but a conscious decision was made by boards and town meeting not to do it.
And now it's been kicked the can down the road to 2018, and we're starting...
Lot of reservoirs, okay, built up in the Swan Pond area. We acquired land and then decided not to do it. And when I say "we," it isn't this board, it was the community as a whole through town meeting that takes those types of actions. It's not just the board. The boards, previous boards, brought these actions and ideas to town meeting, and it was determined not to do it. The community as a whole said, not now. So again, it was, it wasn't a decision of a board, because most of these ideas were brought forth to the community.
Yeah.
For consideration, and they were, it was determined at that time, because for affordability reasons, not to do it. Or who's gonna be in charge, who's gonna be in, in control of what was gonna happen inside of, across our board.
Mr. O'Leary, before I recognize Mrs. Herbert, I just wanna tell you, in this strategic plan, though, we did talk about 2019 to find some option for the fire department. We've been talking about that, it's in the plan, it's been documented in the plan. So I think the timing is right, and we said we were gonna do it. So it's not like we were saying, oh, the fire department's something...
But we didn't say we were gonna set aside money to go and, and acquire property, or purchase a piece of property, or take something by eminent domain in order to meet this need. It's a, it's a need that's been identified.
We said we were gonna identify an option to satisfy this need. You're right, the details of it, no, we haven't gotten it yet, but it is in the plan. I don't want people to think that, you know, it's just something pulling out of the sky.
I was looking for. I didn't see it.
It's in there. So Mrs. Herbert, please.
Abby Herbert, Chairman, North Reading Finance Committee. With regards to this project, a potential project, or purchase possibly leapfrogging other items on the list, the capital committee is, and the capital statement of purpose, as agreed to by the Board of Selectmen, very clearly stipulates that public safety is a priority on capital projects. The other, the other piece of it is that there are tremendous needs that the current firehouse has that, to be quite honest, are really not financially prudent to address in, in the current firehouse. In addition, with new fire, new fire trucks are really too big for the current firehouse, and it's very hard to even fit them in because they're longer than the space allows. So to be quite honest, I would suggest to you that if one of the purposes of this building, should the Board of Selectmen decide to make an offer, is to do something by way of a more centralized fire department, I think that that makes an enormous amount of sense in a number of ways.
And the other thing I'll point out, to add on to what you're saying, is you, where our needs are growing in the fire department, the calls are increasing, we're going to hire more people in the future. We do not have a women's room in this, in this fire station. That has to be addressed. We can't continue to just go out and hire men. We should be able to open up and hire whomever is qualified to do the job, and I think that has to be a priority now.
That was part of what I meant when I said that the list of needs of the current firehouse are really not reasonably met because of the incredible cost...
I just added one more to specifics, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm not gonna applaud.
Mr. Gilbert.
I do feel that it's important, and I'll only speak for myself in my four years as town administrator, so I have never allowed the gender of a candidate for any position to influence whether or not they're hired. Our hiring is done through a civil service process, candidates are ranked, and they're hired depending...
Let's not overthink what I'm saying.
No, I just wanna make sure that, I just wanna correct it, that's...
Don't analyze, overanalyze what I'm saying, but it's a true fact. And for our ability to, as we talk about the growth of our public safety departments, we've also talked about hiring, and hiring is for the best qualified candidate, and best qualified candidate could be of any sex.
Sure.
And I'm just saying that today our facilities, if we do hire a female, we would have to make, make immediately, immediately major modification in that fire station to ensure that they get the right facilities to do their job, and that we don't have.
That's correct.
And that's just another point.
That's absolutely right.
Why I feel there is an urgency that we take this opportunity now to acquire a building to satisfy this fire station at some point. And again, anything we're talking about now won't happen for at least two years, because as you know, it takes, it's a process. Town meeting, design, approving the design, finding the funding, working with the Finance Director to make sure that we have all that locked down, to make sure we can fund it, and then going to town meeting again to get the funding, and then doing the structure and building it, and so on and so forth. It's a long process, so if we, we, we keep waiting and we miss out on this unique opportunity, we're gonna be building it somewhere, and we're certainly could be paying twice as much. So, Mr. Schultz, and then I'd like to move to executive session.
I just wanna say to the public, too, we're only dealing with this issue right now because this particular property came on the market.
Yeah.
We're not rushing to buy a fire station. It's just this happened to come on the market, that's why we're having a special meeting tonight. It's not like we're rushing out to buy a fire station.
No, I think Mr. O'Leary articulated that perfectly in his first comments, so, you know, we're not, nobody's holding a gun to our head to go do this. Okay.
Yes. Please.
Maureen Darien, North Reading Transcript. I have one question. You've mentioned the, the building, the property have an office space. When you say that, do you mean with, attached to the garage, or the little building that used to be used as the self-serve watering place?
Mr. Gilbert, oh, would you please?
Sure, through you, Mr. Chairman, so it's actually both. There is a significant size, what I would say is a significant size office space directly attached to the industrial building near the rear of the property, but there is also a one-story office slash retail building at the front of the property as well.
Maureen, do you have the details of the building?
He gave it to me when I arrived. Have a look at it.
Okay. If any questions, certainly reach out to Town Administrator, myself. I believe a lot of the details are in that. To the podium, please.
Yes, please. Thank you. And I'll be brief. Rich Walner, 57 Lakeside Boulevard. I share Mr. O'Leary's concern about taking the larger view, looking at the bigger picture. The MAPC study is imminent. You can even preview it, and I would encourage you to do that over the next week or two while you're thinking about this. We have a very unique time in our life to look at how we look at our future. The schools are in great shape, they're not in need of money. This is really a time to step back and look at the overall picture. We have a great opportunity, we have some money from Pulte, and we have a chance to create a downtown municipal area. I'm not saying that outweighs the needs of the fire department, I'm not saying it outweighs any of those things, but if, if you're not aware of the issues, then you're a little bit shooting in the dark. And I personally am a planner, I like to have a plan ahead of time. If that costs a little bit more at the end of the day, that's okay, but a big plan is important, and even when we leave buildings behind, what do we do with those buildings? If we let this building behind, what will we do with this building? How does that fit into the chess game that we're playing here? So I encourage you to, nothing else, look at what the MAPC study has shown so far, get a view of that so you can kind of balance that out, and consider the chess sets all overall. And for me, I'm a patient person, it costs a little bit more to have a better plan. It's worth, it's always worth the exercise of doing that, personally.
Thank you, Mr. Walner. I'll take a motion for executive session. Would you please, Mrs. Herbert, can you stay for executive session?
Sure.
And Ms. Carbone, and Ms. Rourke, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the, it'd be easy to just exclude a couple of people. Mr. Chairman, I move to enter into executive session for the purposes of exemption. Six, real property, 217 Main Street. Such discussions in open session will have a detrimental impact on the town, and to admit the following people: Finance Committee Member Herbert, Finance Director Liz Rourke, and Assessor Debbie Carbone.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Messer.
Aye.
Mr. Schultz.
Aye.
Mrs. Meni-Pelli, and the Chair votes aye. We're gonna take a five-minute break to allow North Cam to break down.